Stand and join me in the pledge. Mr. Spellbrink, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, on its nation, under God, with its law, liberty, and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of prayer or silent meditation. All right, thank you. Melanie, would you do a roll call, please?
Councilman Holt.
Present.
Councilman Curry.
Here.
Councilwoman King.
Here.
Councilman Mishler.
Present.
Councilman Fish. Councilwoman Hines.
Here.
Councilman Crabtree.
Here.
Councilman Hinky. President Dawson.
Present. As a reminder, with cell phones, make sure they're turned on vibrate or airplane mode or in silent. Can I get a motion for minutes for approval for August 18th, 2025?
So moved.
Council meeting.
Second.
For Mr. Crabtree, second for Mr. Tynes. In discussion, seeing none, all those who favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Unfinished business, there is none. Presentation and introductions. There are no presentations and introductions. Ordinance on second and third reading. There are no ordinances on second and third reading. Orders and resolutions referred to committee. There are no ordinances or resolutions referred to committee. Tabled ordinance and resolutions. Proposed ordinance 25-0-28 is to remain table until our meeting on September 15th. New business, ordinance on first reading. Would you please read proposed ordinance 25-0-29 by title, please?
Proposed ordinance 25-0-29, an ordinance of the city of Elkhart, Indiana, adopting the Elkhart contractual protection ordinance to prohibit certain limitations of liability and indemnification clauses in contracts with the city.
Third, objections will pass this on the second reading. Mr. Hinky.
Will there be a pretty in-depth presentation before we enact?
I would hope so, yes.
All right, thank you.
Okay, resolutions. Proposed resolution 25-0-37. Would you read that by title, please?
Proposed resolution 25-0-37, a resolution of the common council of the city of Elkhart, Indiana, amending and restating ordinance number 6047 to correct two related Scribner errors.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. John Esper Corporation Council.
All right, let the record show that Mr. Fish has joined us. Thank you, John.
Proposed resolution 25037 corrects a typographical error that appeared in the legal description provided by the survey company that prepared the legal description for the city. It's not the type of typographical error that would necessarily require a resetting of the ordinance process. It's the typographical error that even even left intact would allow any reader to determine what property was being annexed and where it's located.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Hinky.
But that is the only change of this ordinance.
That is correct.
Resolution. Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you, John. I'd like to open up to the public. Is there anyone in the public who would like to speak with regards to this resolution? Seeing none, return it back to the council. Melanie, would you do a roll call vote, please?
Councilman Holt.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hinky. President Dawson.
Aye.
It's nine to zero.
Thank you. There are no vacation hearings. Other new business? Any other new business? Mr. Mishler.
Yes, I just want to thank all of the city staff who helped make the wonderful event the other night happen, from buildings and grounds to police to fire. Everyone who made the Commodores and Cool and the Gang and our friends at the Elkhart Visitors Bureau and all of our sponsors and partners with that as well. It was a fantastic night and it really showed what our community can do together when we work together.
Thank you. Mr. Besides.
I just want to echo that. I won't go into lengthy repeating what Councilman Mishler just said, but it was just something to see, feel, hear, touch, and it took a lot of togetherness and I'm sure a lot of sleepless nights and probably a little back and forth of disagreement, agree to disagree, but it really all came together and Sunday was just as well put together and so a huge thank you to everyone.
Thank you. Mr. Hinky.
I'm not a Commodore, but I'll echo the echo. It was very well attended. It was fun. A lot of closeness, togetherness, met a lot of nice people. However, I was unaware that tickets were in our packet until Sunday morning. And yet you sent out an email. One of us should read that.
But David, you didn't, you didn't?
The email? No. But I'll sell you tickets. So, a couple of things, though, if we could take some notes. Driving here this evening. 2017 West Jackson, that spot, which was an old cleaners thirty years ago, has been abandoned and boarded ever since. It would be nice to know what the end use of that will be or the demolition thereof that's a very much of an eyesore. The same goes with the Middlebury School project that was on Middlebury Street. We had a use for it. There was a young gentleman from Middlebury that thought he was going to get into it, rehab it, and make it all that, and we haven't seen either here since. I would like to see some action there. Again, it's an eyesore when property values really matter. These things will take us down. I would also pan out 613 Johnson with extra vehicles in the yard. The Krogers, actually on Prairie, just leaves a lot of blown litter throughout that neighborhood and it's unfair to the neighborhood to have to pick all of that up when realistically it blows across from Krogers, either the trash cans or whatever happens there. The Easy Shopping Plaza, their flower beds are predominantly weeds and it's unfair to look across the street at parks and nice lawns and flowers and then see the weeds on the easy shopping side. They get rents and speaking of rents, they ought to be able to pay for the cleanup of that area. And then 1,000 Johnson Street on the east side, it's the meridian between the sidewalk and the street. Three-foot weeds, like no one sees them. So the people, whoever's next door, mow their yard across the sidewalk. They just don't pay attention to that three-foot wide area and I think that should be attended to. It's their use of property. Legally, I think they have a responsibility. I'm not sure. And then finally, there has been some discrepancy from guidance ministries and the police department in regards to homelessness and the camping ordinance and there are different interpretations by different officers and I backed myself out. Chief Melanase has been in contact now with Lori and they're getting some education and some resolve to that area. But Pastor Lori believes that there are a segment, handful of people in the population that otherwise have no place to go and they're stuck between two ordinances. I don't pretend to know the outcome. I leave that to the legal team and Chief Melanase to get that corrected. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other? Okay. Melanie received a phone call today. What, a lady wanted somebody to know this, but she didn't want to come to the meeting, so she wanted me to read this at the council meeting. And it says, "There was an accident that occurred last week on County Road 6 and John Weaver Parkway involving a motorcycle and a hit-and-run driver where the male driving the motorcycle was killed and his passenger was thrown from the bike. The passenger sustained a life-threatening delivered artery and would have bled out at the scene if not for the recently adopted ordinance that allowed the ambulance to carry blood. This young woman's life was saved due to that change. Her grandmother wanted to let the people who made the decision to carry blood and the ambulances allowed her granddaughter to live and she will recover from her injuries. She wanted the people to know that good decisions are made in the city and that they should be acknowledged." So, I don't know what that means, but you know, kudos to whomever, so we appreciate that. Okay, report Mayor Board of Works, Sports Safety, nothing. Neighborhood Association reports? Mr. Curry?
Yes, I'd like to report for the Pemaran Neighborhood Association and all the good things that are going on in our neighborhood. First of all, I'd like to thank the city for our cleanup we had. You know, the city assists with trailers and stuff where people can bring their junk and get rid of it. And that was good and even the 3-1-1 coordinator Hugo, him and his girlfriend came and worked hard and we appreciate that because Hugo is, I just see, he's a fine young man. You know, Alex and I went out to check on a problem at apartment complex that had some unsafe conditions and gave it to the 3-1-1 coordinator and it was out there again last week. It's been corrected, which was good. So our guys are on the job and but furthermore, the Pemaran Neighborhood Association, we met yesterday. It was another good meeting with neighbors. We have one neighbor in back of me that's been there a year. The other one's been there about two years and of course, they were at the meeting and it's just good that we all still assisting the family. The house was damaged over a year ago with the tornado and haven't moved in yet, so we cleaned up some of that during the cleanup and we're going to continue helping them try to get ready for that for when they are able to move in. But it's just good when you sit down with your neighbors and discuss the pros and cons because we have a new one in the Troyer's home there at Benham and Thorndale. We went by twice to meet those people and haven't called them at home yet, but we'll catch them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. Mr. Mishler.
Thanks. I actually have one. The St. Joseph Manor Neighborhood Association had our annual meeting a couple of weekends ago. We met together in the little park in St. Joe Manor and we discussed the state of the association, kind of met our neighbors, had some good conversations, appointed a new treasurer and yeah, it's just great to get to know your neighbors a little bit and that's what makes Neighborhood Association so, so great.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you. Privilege of the floor. Mr. Mishler, Mr. Holtz?
I just have the statement to read before.
Okay.
If it's time for that, I'll do it.
That's fine, Mr. Holtz.
Okay. I have per Indiana Code 5-14-1.3. I think that's a three. I'm not sure if it's a, okay, it's a five. 5-14-1.5 and it is something to read to the public before we get to privilege of the floor. And it says, "Members of the public may speak on any topic not already discussed in this meeting. All comments must be presented respectfully without the use of profanity, sarcasm, or demeaning language. Additionally, all comments must be addressed to the council as a whole, not to individual members, staff, or audience members."
Thank you, Mr. Holtz. With that, I'll open privilege of the floor. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak?
Mr. President and members of the council. My name is Ralph Spellbrink. I've lived on the East Jackson area for more than five decades. I want to point out that today is the first day for a route in Cosiasko County. It's going to go Warsaw and Monona Lake, so it'll go up to Grace College. That part of that is the Yellowstone Trail, which is one of the first highways across the country. It went through the northern tier of states. The Lincoln Highway also, the 1928 route for the Lincoln Highway also went through Warsaw and Cosiasko County. The fiscal year for the federal government and the state of Michigan were changed from ending on June 30th in 1976 to September 30th. So Michigan still hasn't adopted a budget, so I guess they need a little extra time this year. I'd like to read a statement. "Doesn't Indiana Republican State Senators who voted against Senate Bill 1 are to be commended?" It's a really poor tax bill. Republican State Senators who voted no are as follows. Alting of Lafayette, Bassler of Washington, Becker of Evansville, Bocheck of Michiana Shores, Buck of Kokomo, Perusco of Indy, Geary of West Lafayette, Durnell of Highland, Freeman of Indy, Thomas of Evansville, Young of Indy, and Zay of Huntington. I cannot imagine Senator Richard Luger supporting redistricting in 2025 after Republicans drew election districts in 2021. I've sent this letter to the Goshen News. It hasn't been printed yet. We'll see if they print it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ralph. Thirty, what else?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, President Dawson, Board, Mayor Robertson. My name is Regina. Thanks, David. My name is Regina Robertson and I am the project director for the Full Service Community Schools program with Elkhart Community Schools. This program is a joint effort with Elkhart and Concord Schools. We have six schools in Elkhart, two schools in Concord, and we are having our inaugural Resource Fair on Thursday. And I would like to invite all of you to come out. We're going to be at the Woodland Crossings or Pemaran Mall is what I call it. Right by the Excel Building or the Sears Building, that's what I call it also, from 5:00 to 7:00. And when we started this venture, we felt like, you know what, if we could have 2025 vendors, we'd be really good. We're up to like 63 vendors already, so we're looking forward to it. We really are. And I also want to give a special thank you to the city of Elkhart for helping, letting us use that space. And in particular, the Board of Works, Nancy, for all her help, Parks Department, the Environmental Center, Building and Co. Department, the Elkhart Police Department, Elkhart Fire Department, my 3-1-1, the Human Resources Department, Elkhart Communications, Alex, Otto. And you know, I have to give a very, very special thank you to Drew. Is Drew here? Drew Wines. I can't say, I don't know what, how to say his last name, but he has just been amazing the whole time to help guide through this whole process and I'm just, I'm thankful. So I will leave with you. Oh, and I'd like to thank Mayor Wright, too, for telling me who to call. So I would like to leave some information flyers.
Just give that to Melanie and she'll make sure we get it.
About the full service program and also about Thursday. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the audience?
Y'all know that's in the great fifth district.
Good evening, council. My name is Michelle Corich and I am now among great company. The great Mel Blunt in the 1970s, Pittsburgh Steeler number 47 cornerback. There's a rule named after him in the NFL. It's called the Mel Blunt Rule. And in 1990s, Hines Ward got a role too. His, he was number 86. He was a wide receiver, an amazing human being. And he got a role too. So Councilman Holtz, I am so proud to have my name attached as the Corich Rule if I can be among that company. However, you missed a few numbers because the code is actually IC Code 5141.5-3.3. And sarcasm is subjective, so I don't think that's legal. However, for you, Councilman Mishler, I brought my copy of the Constitution and the First Amendment is much more important than the Second Amendment, which if you don't have the First Amendment, the Second Amendment doesn't much matter now, does it? But I'm here to remind the citizens of the city of Elkhart that the city council gave $5 million to give away the Tulsa Center. Then this council and the previous one have been paying $700,000 a year for 10 years to Tulsa Center, to run Tulsa Center, to a not-for-profit that has no council oversight and no citizenry oversight. So if I do my math right, Councilman Holtz, that comes at $12 million that was given away with no oversight. So I'm here to say to this council and the members of any elected body in the city of Elkhart. Elkhart, it's not your wallet. The citizens of this community are going to be taxed and taxed and taxed again, and Mr. Dawson's going to have to pay for lots of wheel taxes on his vehicles, and that would just be a tragedy. The other thing that I'm here to remind the citizens of the City of Elkhart is that the mayor and five members of this body have a direct line to the Elkhart Community Schools, who are also going to be damaged by SB 1 or the SEA Act. So I'm going to remind the citizens of Elkhart...
You have 15 seconds.
I'm going to remind the citizens of Elkhart that Arvist, Dawson, Dwight, Fish, Tonda Hines, Chad Crabtree, and Alex Holtz and the mayor have all worked for, retired from, and/or currently working for the school system.
Thank you very much. Your time is up. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Or Elkhart Community Schools.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak? Saying none, I'll close the public hearing. Turn to the council for discussion.
Mr. President, not so much a point of order, but I'm looking at our screens for the first time tonight, and they're...
Looking at what?
The screens here, the desktops. Not, I'm hopeful that this is not what we're going to end up with. The view is kind of rough.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to throw that out there, just to make sure I get that it's a process.
Yeah, I think we all agree. I mean, it's...
Because my movie isn't coming in.
Okay. Scheduling of committee meetings. Mr. Mishler?
Yes, it's to my understanding that there's going to be a discussion of a potential battery factory coming to the City of Elkhart, and I believe the Health and Public Safety Committee would be a good place for that discussion, and I look forward to scheduling that with our Economic Development Director in the future.
Thank you. Acceptance of communications?
So move.
And most of them are square. Please, say for the signs, accept communications. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Motion to adjourn.
So move.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. David, you got your... David, make sure he takes...
That's what I was going to ask.